Okay, lovely. That's great. So it's a big honour for me to... that you've asked me once again, because it's the second time that I've come here to join in study of Pierre's book with you. But of course, last time it only existed in this form, and now it exists as a proper book, which is lovely, and we'll be launching that tonight, as you know. And to be honest, I couldn't remember exactly what I'd covered last time. And of course, we must remember that the last time we gathered here to do this, Pierre was still alive. And there was all kinds of excited and optimistic talk about maybe meeting up and that sort of thing. And then sadly, it wasn't very long before he left us. And so I guess this is the first time we're getting together to do this when he's no longer in this world with us. And so that's very special too. And I hope what we do together will honour him. Now, I think what I did last time, one of the main things that we did together last time, and I know not all of you were here for that, was that we looked in some detail at the introduction to the book. And we read quite a lot of the introduction together. In fact, I think we spent most of the time on the introduction and discussing what Pierre lays out as his aims in the book and the way he's going to proceed. So I thought I wouldn't do that with you today. Instead, what I hope will work out okay is that we have selections from the end of each of the three major chapters of the book. So can I just get a quick idea? Has anybody actually read it yet? Bits, but not systematically. Right, okay. And welcome. Okay, I'm not the only male person in the room now.
This is Paul, who lives locally. You're very lucky.
So where were we? Yeah, so those of you who have read any part of Pierre's book will know that it's not an easy read. In fact, it's a most unusual book. It's less of a book in the conventional sense as a sort of sustained prose argument than kind of studying texts out loud with us. So it's a book that I think we have to look at as having Pierre with us. Actually, not even lecturing, but in the process of studying with us. So try and... Some of you I know knew him and will know his voice. I didn't... I've seen him on YouTube, but I didn't ever hear his voice in person. But I think that this is a conversation that Pierre is having. And it's a little bit like eavesdropping on someone else's conversation and wondering, "What are they actually talking about and what's going on there?" And I don't mean that because it's obscure, but because he's in a kind of dialogue, a partnership with other, with others. Who are the others? I think the others are probably his Jewish study partners with whom he had spent many years studying, especially in Jerusalem. But also the texts that he's studying. And the texts he's studying are primarily the Sidur. First and foremost, it's a book about the Jewish prayer book. Secondly, rabbinic literature. So the Talmud and Midrash, the whole body of ancient canonical rabbinic literature from what you would call the patristic period in church history. So it was the rabbinic period, as you know, in Jewish history. So all of those texts. And thirdly, and perhaps most tantalizingly, kabbalistic and especially Hasidic texts. So we have Pierre himself, we have the Jewish prayer book, we have the ancient rabbinic texts, and we have the Hasidic texts, mainly Hasidic, from the 18th, 19th, and 20th centuries. So modern Jewish mystical devotional literature. And we have, as I said, his own Jewish study partners. And I don't know who they were. But who was the great scholar he studied with? Remind me.
Arthur Green, yes?
Arthur Green, okay. Yeah, there was Arthur Green and there was somebody else he studied with, whose name has slipped my mind, at the Hebrew University. But yeah, so...
Rana Fontana was one of his students.
Who was that?
Rana, Rana Fontana.
Ah, okay.
Christian, but Talmud scholar now. He was one of, for many years, a student, but also a partner with Pierre.
Yes, thank you. So he's in dialogue with all of these interlocutors, all of these partners. And then of course, he is speaking, and he makes this very clear in his introduction. He's not speaking in the book. He's not addressing the Jewish partners, although he is in the study partnership with them, but he's, as it were, turning to address his fellow Christians. And it's very much, and he makes this very clear, it's a book addressed to Christians because his argument is a persuasive argument in which he is trying to convince Christians of something, of something about the links between Christianity and Judaism at the very deepest theological level. So although he's in a sort of scholarly dialogue with all of these Jewish partners and Jewish texts, he's actually directly addressing Christian partners. I might say some of this again tonight, so forgive me if you hear it again later. And he's very much trying to persuade. And so he's also bringing into the dialogue Christians who will read his book, but also a lot of Christian scholars and scholarship and a whole theological tradition as well. And we'll see some of that later on. So that's a complex thing that he's doing in the book. And that's why, I think that's why the book comes across as so complex. And it requires not just a reading. It's not a book you could skim very easily. But the way he writes the book is the way Jews study texts together. The way Jews study texts together in a kind of debate and discussion that sometimes seems to go way off the central theme, but actually is all related to what he wants to argue. And so it's a book that repays studying in the way he would have sat and studied the texts, either on his own or with his study partners, Jewish or Christian. So that's all we're going to try and do a little bit today, I guess. And I hope it will be enjoyable and work out. So before we dive in, are there any comments or questions you have at this point? Not yet, fair enough. Okay, right. Okay, so as I said, what we're going to do is look at the concluding sections of each of the three chapters. It's arranged in three chapters. I don't know if you have the contents in front of you, so I'll read that out, just in case you don't. There's an introduction, quite a long introduction. Then chapter one has the rather daunting title, "The Lord," in brackets, "Yad HaVav Ha' the God, Elohim, of Israel is the one and only first paragraph of the Shema," in brackets. And that goes from page one to page 122. That's a very long chapter. And the bulk of that chapter is taken up with an analysis of Jewish liturgy, of the central passages of the daily and, to a lesser extent, the Sabbath liturgy, the daily and Sabbath liturgy, to pick out from it what he sees as profound theological themes which will relate to his ultimate goal of arguing that within Jewish theology, within Jewish liturgy, there is, and within the Jewish concept of the unity of God, there is a deep trinitarian element which can create a bridge between Jewish and Christian theology. I think that's a fair summary of what he's trying to do in there. But along the way, he also brings in many, many Midrashim, many rabbinic texts and interpretations from the classical rabbinic literature as well. Chapter two is entitled "Unity, Trinity," with a dash in between. Unity, Trinity. That goes from page 123 to 182. Slightly shorter than the first chapter, but still pretty lengthy. And then the third chapter is just... The second chapter here is called "Unity-Trinity."
The bigger ones is page 95.
Oh, sorry, if you have the... Oh, right, yes, I haven't got the pages in the big copy. How many of you have the big original copy? Oh, quite a few, I see, okay. I don't have the... Yes, I don't have the detailed page numbers in there. But I'll give you some in a minute. And then the third chapter, by far the shortest, is simply called "Trinity." And that begins on page 183 in the book and goes to about page 204. And then there are a number of appendices, mostly fairly short lists of further study material for the most part. I have to say, ideally, the chapters could have been further broken down in the contents into sections to make the structure a little bit clearer. That's maybe for the second edition. So but we'll deal with each of those in turn. And one of the challenges is that Pierre builds up in his own mind, as he writes, a very complex network of texts. And he constantly cross-references to texts that he's dealt with, which we won't always necessarily be able to follow in detail. But that's... And this is very much the way study is done in a yeshiva, in a Jewish rabbinic scholarly setting, where you keep all kinds of different texts and topics in play at the same time. And the study is done, and some of you know this very well, but not all of you will, in yeshiva, you don't sit and study on your own in silence. You sit usually across the table from a chavuta, a partner, and you read the text out to one another and help one another. First comprehend the basic meaning, but then go deeper and deeper into what it means, often with lots of arguments about how to interpret it, referring to commentaries that always appear around the side of the page. There's always numerous commentaries on the page. And then running to get other books with other commentaries. And in the Talmud, whenever you're studying a page of Talmud, there are lists on each page of cross-references to other parts of the Talmud. And you can't really understand any one page without actually going and getting another volume and checking the discussion there, because otherwise it's difficult to follow. So in other words, by the end of a study session, you have a huge pile of books piled up literally on the table, and you're constantly referring to all of them. And this is what he does in this book. He has, as it were, a whole pile of books there, here, in front of him. And he's constantly telling you now, "Now, as it says in that one, remember this bit, and we're going to talk about that bit later on." And it all becomes a little bit confusing, but if you take the time, and I hope, we'll try and do this a little bit, we'll figure it out. So without further ado then, let's start with our first text, which is from chapter one, the end of chapter one. And those who are looking in the big copy, it's on page 90. But you have the hand out there from the book. Now, part of his argument before the section that we're going to look at concerns the dynamic that is represented in Jewish texts and in Jewish liturgy of the people, the people of Israel chosen by God. He has a very, very strong sense of divine election of the people of Israel, perhaps stronger than some liberal Jews like me have, but that's another matter. But part of the dynamic of that is of course that the people of Israel are not always faithful to their calling, as we know, only too well, and fall away from God. And this is the dynamic within the Bible repeatedly of sin and suffering and exile and repentance and return. And so the cycle goes. And so he's touched upon this idea of the cycle, which involves estrangement from God and then a return to God. And the return, as he argues from rabbinic and Hasidic texts, a return that ultimately is for the sake of a sort of spiritual union with God. So where the unity has been broken, the unity that should exist between God and the people of revelation, the unity has been broken and should be restored. And at the end of the previous passage, in the last few paragraphs there, on page 116, he points to the Sabbath as a symbol of the restoration of unity. And this is part of the kabbalistic and Hasidic theology of the Sabbath. The days of the week are days of separation, days of isolation, days of fragmentation, and represent the general state of the world that we live in. But the Sabbath represents a restoration of wholeness, of unity, a tikkun, a mending, an infusion of the divine back into the estranged world. And so he's going to look in depth at this symbolism. It's always good with Pierre's book. The beginning of a new section is never really the beginning of a new section because in the previous section, he always points ahead quite fully to it. So perhaps we need to start with the last paragraph. I think we'll just start there of the previous section, where it says "to conclude this stage." Start with the end of something. How would you like to do this? Are you happy if we go around the room and people read a paragraph? And after we've read a bit, if there are questions and things that are not clear, I'll try to explain. Others also are welcome to explain because we all bring a lot of knowledge to this. And then we'll go on. So shall we start with you, Kasha?
She has a mic on.
Oh, there's a mic there. So we'll do it that way. Start with you and go around anti-clockwise, okay.
To conclude this stage, we hear that the righteous, by their work of de-creating the world, cause human beings and the world to return to the divine nothing, which causes all the walls of hatred and division to disappear. Union with God is attained by the negative way. By the negative way, for Christians, Jesus is the righteous par excellence who confirms the work of all the righteous. Here's the abridged word which recapitulates the whole of creation. Here's the Alpha and the Omega, the reality of Shabbat. As Father de Lubac dared to say, now we must receive the message from the Shabbat.
That's Henri de Lubac, of course, great, great scholar, theologian. So this is summing up some very interesting themes which I think we looked at last time. The texts about the work of the righteous, a rabbinic text that he loves, about the work of the righteous being greater than the work of God in creation. Of course, God brings something out of nothing, whereas the righteous bring nothing out of something. By their works of righteousness, by their focus and devotion on God, they bring all of the diversity of creation together back into the divine nothing, the inexpressible, ineffable origin of things, which Jewish mysticism calls nothing, nothing compared to the something of this world. And so that's the theme we looked at last time. And you can see here how, as a Christian, he takes the rabbinic concept of the righteous, the tzaddikim, the righteous ones, or the tzaddik, the righteous one, who is a sort of link between heaven and earth in Jewish theology, especially mystical theology. And he concentrates that in Jesus as the ultimate tzaddik, who brings everything back, as it were, to the Father, back from something to nothing. So with that as a background, any questions or comments on that? I know that's referred to quite a lot of big ideas, but that's not our main focus right now.
That word is there, the de-creating.
Yes.
The picture I get is there's the nothingness, and from the nothingness there's creation. And then the righteous take it back to the nothingness.
That's right. That's right, exactly. That's right. But that nothingness is of course a fullness of God. So it's only called nothing because from the perspective of this world, it's something that is utterly different. It's no thing, as you say, exactly.
Well, can you just... It was a bit startling by, I mean, the unedited translation. I'm just wondering what's going in the French. He calls Jesus the abridged word.
Yes.
Strange description.
Lovely. I think what he's saying there, well, I'm pretty sure what he's saying there is that the word in its first form, in which it was given to Moses, say, takes a form of a long discursive text, a revelation in many, many words. And of course, and especially for Pierre, the revelation is not just the basic scriptural text because he, and he makes this very clear, he accepts the whole of the rabbinic tradition, as orthodox Judaism does, as a genuine and legitimate part of that revelation. It's the oral Torah, but it's still Torah. So that means the revelation is not just the Torah or the Bible, but the whole of the Talmud and the Midrash, the whole of Jewish oral tradition. And he loves that, and he accepts that as part of Torah. So in contrast to all of that, the word as incarnate in Jesus is a much more, as it were, compact entity, so to speak. Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So in that sense, abridged from all of those millions of words to the word.
That's lovely, thank you.
I think he's echoing de Lubac, who hugely translates us. It condenses.
Ah, okay, yes.
That he says that all revelation is condensed in the Saint Christ.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Very helpful. Yes, there are issues with Kathy's translation. And all honour to her for such an extraordinary work that she's done here. But yes, I constantly spot things and wonder, you know, what was the French for that? But it's a wonderful achievement, just to say. Thanks for that, because I don't know enough about Henri de Lubac.
I think I have a problem listening. I'm sorry, but we need to use mine because it's recording and it will be not heard. And also, some people do not hear. Thank you. And I know it's... You're not going to be able to answer this in a minute, but it is a problem. I've lost my line. Union with God is attained by a negative way. The negativity. And yet what we're doing is saying, or Pierre, I think, is saying, it's action, it's what we do and we go back to nothing. And I'm very puzzled as to how we... Don't tell me I'm talking about the problem of evil.
Not quite, no, I don't think so, sister, no. I'm the one. So the negative way is the via negativa in Latin. And it's another term for it is what the Eastern Church calls apophatic theology. So it's a theology that emphasizes the unknowability and inexpressibility of God.
I like unknown, that's it.
Yes, yes.
The nothing.
Yeah, okay.
By the nothing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's... Yeah, I could say a lot more about the nothing as a kabbalist concept. It's very much part of Kabbalah, not part of rabbinic Judaism. The idea of God as Ayin. It sounds better in Hebrew, the word Ayin, which for the kabbalist is an anagram of ani, which is I. You just switch the letters around. So for the kabbalists, God's creative activity has to begin with an emergence of God, a manifestation of God, from Ayin, from that of which nothing can be said, to the ani, the I of God, the ego of God, which we find expressed in the Torah. So it's a process within God. But if one goes into the deepest level of theology, he seems to be acknowledging here that the essence of God cannot be known in any positive way because one can never pinpoint it or identify it or say anything really valid about it. So all you can know is what it isn't. It's not anything else, or it's not like anything else. So this is, in Jewish tradition, this is mainly associated with the philosophy of Maimonides, who was a sort of rationalist philosopher, and set out in a very rationalistic way, this via negativa, how God is best approached, not by trying to identify what God is, but trying to impress upon ourselves fully that God is utterly other than anything that we can identify or define. And that's the via negativa. And of course, it's a dominant, a dominant theology in the Eastern Church and has some exponents, not quite so much in the Western Church as well. You know more about that perhaps than I do. So I think, yes, I think he's relating that to this idea of the... Another word for this de-creating in, I think, in Western tradition or in modern tradition is the Great Return. Have people heard of that idea, the Great Return? That everything emerges from the one. It's actually a neo-Platonic concept. It comes from the neo-Platonists of the second, third century, the common era. And then is expressed in Christian theology by pseudodinism. It's about sixth century, is that? Yeah? And becomes part and parcel of medieval theology because neo-Platonism kind of got everywhere in medieval theology, even into... even into rational, rationalistic Aristotelian philosophy. So the idea that everything emerges from the unknowability of God, from the nothing of God, and ultimately everything returns to, to, to its source. So this is a big theme in Jewish mysticism, but also, I think, in, in medieval Christian mysticism. I think you get it in Meister Eckhart and people like that, yes. So, right. Good, let's go on then. So a new heading, a Sabbath as instrument of creation, creations return to God.
Put it very near your mouth.
The Sabbath is the culmination of creation, the instrument of revelation, the fulfillment of redemption. The communities established of obligatory prayer compose in these three stages. Creation in the central blessing of the evening liturgy. Mari, oh, Mari, sorry.
It's all right.
In Hebrew. Revelation in the central blessing of the morning liturgy. Redemption in the central blessing of the afternoon liturgy. Minha.
Minha, good, thank you. So this is something that is, this idea of three stages or three key ways in which we relate to God, creation, revelation, and redemption, is a kind of standard idea in modern Jewish theology. Was most famously expounded by Franz Rosenzweig, great early 20th century Jewish philosopher. And, and this threefold activity or manifestation of God as Creator, as a source of revelation, and as Redeemer, is kind of encoded within the Jewish liturgy. Earlier on in the chapter, he's talked about how it's encoded within the daily Jewish liturgy. So in the every, in, in the morning and evening service, you have the Shabbat, the central declaration that the Lord is One. And you have blessings before and after it. So paragraphs of prayer before and after, which represent first the blessing for creation. It's related to the creation of light in the morning and to the cycle of light and darkness in the evening. So that's God as Creator of nature. Then of revelation, God's love expressed in giving us the Torah, is the second blessing. Then we read the Shabbat, which is, of course, from the Torah, and says, "You shall love the Lord your God." So we first talk about our love, to God's love for us in giving us the Torah, which is seen as a gift of love. And then our duty to love God in return, as it were. And then the blessing after the Shabbat is a blessing of redemption, which speaks of God's redeeming power through history and the Exodus from Egypt, the crossing of the Red Sea, and so forth. So God as Redeemer. So there's these three themes in every morning and evening service, every day, for those who do their daily prayers. And that's, but here what he's pointing out is that the same threefold theme appears in the Shabbat liturgy, not all in the same service, but spread throughout the three services. So the evening service, which is the first one of Shabbat on Friday evening, highlights the theme of creation, God as Creator. The morning service highlights the theme of revelation, especially God giving the commandment of the Sabbath in the Ten Commandments. That's part of revelation. So that's a key theme in the morning service. And then the afternoon service on Shabbat focuses on redemption. Hardly ever anybody goes to the afternoon service on Shabbat, so they miss out on that bit mostly. But there we are. And then he's got the Hebrew names in there for the services. The evening service has two names, Mari for Ashkenazi Jews and Arvit for Sephardi Jews. Two different names. Okay, any further questions about that? Clarify that a bit. If you feel a bit overwhelmed by information, you can ask to clarify or simply reread the paragraph and forget what I'm saying. Okay.
Mark, could you say a little bit more about redemption?
Okay, the question is, could I say a bit more about redemption?
Yes, redemption in Jewish thought.
Oh, wow, that's a.
Because it's very different to Christian redemption.
Yes, yes and no. It is in a way, because it, it focuses mainly on the, the literal, physical redemption of the people, of the Jewish people, from slavery, from oppression, and from suffering, and ultimately the coming of a messianic age, of a Messiah, when, when all of those problems will, will no longer exist. So it's, it's not primarily about redemption from sin in the way that it possibly is in, in a lot of Christian theology, where the primary, God is our Redeemer. God redeems us from sin and from death through the work of Jesus, for Christians. So yeah, so there's, there's more of a collective and political focus, I suppose, to the general Jewish concept of redemption. But I would argue that those other themes are present there. They might not always be focused on the, the word redemption, the vocabulary of redemption. The, the Hebrew for redemption here in the liturgy is always ge'ulah. Ge'ulah. The root, the verb is ga'al, to redeem. The primary meaning of redeem is to redeem someone from slavery by buying them out of slavery, literally. Yeah, that's one important meaning. Or to redeem property that has been lost to the family, because they got poor and they had to. And someone, some relative with money will buy it back and redeem it for the family. So it's a bringing back, a restoration of, of, of a, of a, a rightful ideal situation. You also get the vocabulary in the Torah of the Redeemer of Blood, the Goel Haddam, which was someone who would avenge blood wrongly spilt. Yeah, so if someone had killed someone, then another family member would go and kill that person. So the Torah, of course, tries to, to minimize, if not eliminate, that kind of procedure by providing cities of refuge, so that the person who's committed manslaughter can find refuge and the Redeemer of Blood can't get to them, isn't allowed to take revenge. So there is an element of that in there, in the, the origins of the concept. But of course, religiously, it moves very far away from that. And so you get it applied to, to God's redemptive activity, bringing the people out of Egypt, redeeming them from slavery, bringing them safely through the waters of the Red Sea. And that's what the liturgy focuses on. And ultimately, the messianic redemption. But there are other words in, in Hebrew as well. There's yeshua, which is salvation, which may have its ultimate linguistic roots in the idea of victory in battle, but ultimately comes to be, in the Bible, a spiritual concept of victory over, over death, over sin, and so forth. And so that, that concept is there as well. It's allied, it's joined on to the concept of redemption, of a Moshe, a savior. Slightly different semantic field. One of the differences is that in Jewish thinking, of course, redemption in the sense of redemption from servitude, oppression, warfare, et cetera, will come from God, but in standard Jewish theology, through an intermediary, i.e. the Messiah, the human Messiah, who will somehow, you know, achieve that in, in the fullness of time. So redemption in that sense is kind of mediated in some way. Whereas salvation in the sense of being released from sin and from death in some way is, is, is not mediated in Jewish thought. There's, no Messiah has anything to do with that. That's simply an activity of God with us, within us, through our own repentance. God provides that possibility for us. So there's a bit of a disjunction between, between the idea of a messianic redemption and individual salvation, which is not a term Jews use very much, but there are, but it is meaningful when one's doing a comparative theology. Because there's the idea that, you know, where God creates us with an evil inclination, but also with the means to overcome the evil inclination through the Torah, through good deeds and study and all that. And ultimately through repentance, when we've done wrong. And then, and God provides us the way back to God. But it's, it's, that's always on an individual basis, not collective so much, and not mediated by a messianic figure. Does that answer what you?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. Okay, right. There are other terms as well, incidentally. There's God as the pordar, as the, it's another word for redeem, pidyon. But it's, that's not going to. Right. So now he's going to explore the, the, how the Sabbath moves through these stages, creation, revelation, redemption, from the something back to the nothing, as it were. Let's continue. Mary, would you?
The Testament of the Rebosh, wrote by Israel of Baal Shemtov, is a collection of sayings spoken by the founder of modern Hasidism and collected in the school of the great Magid of Mesrich. The written summarized elliptic, elliptic notation insights one to find the original of the teaching that is given orally. To observe the Shabbat according to its norm in all its details and minutiae, the sign, siman, to remember is Psalm 90:3. You cause man, Enos, to return to dust. You cause to return, tashemeh. These are the letters of Shabbat, man Enos. That is the saying, even the one who practiced idolatry as in the time of Enos is forgiven, as it is said in Isaiah 56 to happy the man Enos who does thus.
Okay. Right, so let's try and unpack this tricky little Hasidic text. So when he says, "Collection of sayings spoken by the founder of modern Hasidism", we have to take that on faith. We don't know for sure. All of these writings were collected later, after the time of the Baal Shemtov. So who was he? Some of you might be familiar with him. He's the founder figure of the Hasidic movement. And he came from Podolia, which is a region of Ukraine, in, in the 18th century. Born around 1700, died in 1760. And from 1740 onwards, he was active as a, as a mystical leader and teacher. Gathered around himself a, a, a band of disciples who became the Hasidic movement. Hasidism means pietism, of course. And this was a kind of revival movement focused on mystical ideas. So it's, it's an outgrowth of Kabbalah, of Jewish mysticism in 18th century Poland and Ukraine. In the 19th century, it grew to become a mass movement in Eastern European Jewry. And, and of course, most of the Hasidian perished in the Holocaust, but they've built up communities since then in other parts of the world and a thriving part of the Jewish community to this day. But, so the Baal Shemtov, that, that term, some of you will know, means master of the good name. Baal Shemtov, the master of the good name, or the good master of the name. A Baal Shem was someone who was credited with secret knowledge of the pronunciation of God's name, which most of us don't know and don't pronounce. But if you know it, if you know the secret, then you have access to all kinds of spiritual miraculous powers. Some people, it's just pure superstition, but it's very important in, in Jewish mystical and Hasidic tradition. So he's referring here to a work called Savat Har Rebosh, The Will, or The Testament of the Baal Shemtov, which is a collection of sayings, as he says. The, the Magid of Mesrich, who he refers to at the bottom, was the successor of the Baal Shemtov as the leader of the early Hasidic movement in the 1760s. And he had also a large group of disciples who then spread out around Eastern Europe, taking the message of Hasidism far and wide. And so let's have a look now at the, the text itself. It's presented as the Baal Shemtov's commentary on a Talmudic passage from the tractate Shabbat, which deals with the Sabbath, or the laws of the Sabbath. Yeah. Okay, so to observe the Shabbat according to its norm in all its details and minutiae, and some of you will know how, what that means in terms of an extraordinary body of rules governing every aspect of behavior throughout Shabbat, 25 hours. There are innumerable activities that are forbidden, all kinds of extraordinary details. But all of it goes together for Orthodox Jews to make up a very spiritual and holy time, set apart from ordinary time, where everything becomes different, transformed in a way. And I'm sure that Pierre had experience of this with Orthodox Jews. And it can be very special, the experience of Shabbat. Has anyone here kept Shabbat with Orthodox Jews ever? Yes, Kasia has, yeah? So, so everything is different. All the things you do during the week, you don't do on Shabbat. But you, you do, you do, well, I mean, you eat and you sleep, but in a, in a different way from, from during the week. And lots of prayer and study and singing and resting. So, so it's talking here about a siman, a sign, which means a kind of mystical hint to what this means in the verse from Psalm 90, tashiv enos ad dakka. So the word tashiv, you, you cause to return, has the same letters as Shabbat. It's an anagram of the word Shabbat. Yeah? And who is it that God returns? Enos. There are several different terms for man, for human being, in, in the Bible. There's Adam, of course, the main term for a human being. There's Ish, which is a man. One of the terms is enos. And enos is always taken to mean the human being at their most faulty and vulnerable and erring. That's the most negative term for the human being. A mere mortal, as it were. A mere fallible mortal is the sense of enos. Enos was also the name of Adam's grandson. Adam set enos, yeah? And there's a, a verse early on in the Book of Genesis that, where it gives the genealogy of Adam's descendants, says, and it mentions enos, and it says, "In his time, people began to call upon the name of the Lord." And for various complicated reasons, I won't go into, rabbinic tradition understands that to mean that that's when idolatry began. Yeah? That until Adam and his children all knew only God, that by the third generation, people's knowledge of God was starting to get a bit hazy, and people were interpreting the stars and the planets and, and forces of nature as divine. And that, this all came in the time of enos. So what does it mean? You cause enosh to return. I'm not quite sure what the dust refers to here, I have to confess. But you cause enosh to return. How does the human sunk in idolatry turn back to God? And come back to God? It's tashiv, it's through the letters of Shabbat. Through the Sabbath. So this is the kind of wordplay that rabbis delight in, Kabbalists especially delight in. And a lot of people don't delight in, okay? A lot of my congregants at this point say, oh, that's just nonsense. They're just making it up. Anything can mean anything. But anyway, that's, that's one perspective. But Pierre completely absorbs and embraces the rabbinic perspective, that these are truly meaningful parts of revelation, yeah? So that even this, this Hasidic source from the 18th century or early 19th century, I think, when it was actually published, is part of Torah, is part of God's Word. And this is telling us something of great significance. Okay? And the proof that it is enosh, humans at their weakest, who can actually return through Shabbat to God is this verse in Isaiah, which, "happy the enosh who does this", which once again uses that particular term. So even the enosh can achieve happiness, that is, an ashrei. Happy is like, is like the word in the Beatitudes. Blessed, blessed are the meek and so forth. Yeah, it's ashrei, it's, it's that sense of, well, it's the first word of the Psalms. Happy the man who makes God's Torah his delight. So it's that, that sense of being with God. Being favored by God and being with God. Okay, let's read on a little bit, shall we? Unless there are questions, of course, sorry. Yes, sorry.
A quick one. Difference between siman and ot. Why the word siman is used here, not ot? Because very often ot is used as Shabbat sign. It's the same in English, but there's a...
It's true, yes, good question. The word ot would not normally be used for a kind of wordplay of this kind. Ot, which means sign or letter, it also means a Hebrew letter, but it, it means a sign in a quite grand sense. So the Shabbat itself is called an ot. Yeah, in Exodus, it is a sign between me and the children, the Sabbath, that is, is a sign between me and the children of Israel forever. So Sabbath, the Sabbath is a great sign, a symbol through which we are in relationship with God. There are other things, circumcision is called an ot, a sign. The tefillin that you put on weekdays with the shema in them are called a sign. But a, but a, an anagram that teaches you something would not be called a sign. It could be called a siman. It could also be called a remes, which is like a hint, a mystical hint at something. But yeah, the word ot wouldn't really apply to that kind of, of sign. Yeah. Okay. Any other few questions there? Right. Margaret, would you?
Becht teaches that the return to dust, to nothing, is the path to forgiveness and joy. Along the lines of Becht and of the Magid of Mesrich, Rabbi Shulam Feibush of Zabar develops the interpretation of the Sabbath as restitution, as return to God.
Okay. Just before we get into this text, well, I'll just say a brief word. It's Baraj, actually. There should be another z in front of the H there, I think. It's Baraj. Don't ask me. Okay, so, return to dust, okay. So that's how he interprets the dust in the verse. Tashiv enosh ad daka, returning to dust, is returning to an ultimate nothingness. The ultimate nothingness, which is God. And this is a key concept, especially in Hasidism. It's perhaps, it's one of the key concepts of Hasidic thought. In Hebrew, it's called Bitul Hayesh. The nullification of the something, the something that we are, in the face of the nothing that is God. So it's this ideal of a mystical union ultimately, of completely losing ourselves in God, of the, yes, the elimination of the ego, as it were. And this is a mystical goal in many mystical traditions, expressed in different ways in different religious languages. But this is the Hasidic way of talking about it and it's a very, very distinctive aspect of Hasidic thought. So let's have a go, shall we, at this Hasidic text? Shulam Feibush of Zabar. Feibush, incidentally, is a, is a Yiddish name, which ultimately comes from Phoebus. Phoebus, the son, yeah? So it's a, Phoebus was a, was a popular name amongst medieval Ashkenazi Jews. And, and became Yiddishized as Feibish. Just a little note. Okay. Margaret, would you want to carry on? Or do you want to, whoever feels comfortable reading this really long, 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 long text? Okay.
It is long. The Sabbath is called by a name that means restitution, hashavah, because there is no subsistence for any created thing in the world that is foreign to the will of the name, blessed be he. For nothing has its own existence. Since all things were created after the absence, the emptiness left in God, if one can save us by tzimsum, the restriction. All things were preceded by the absence.
Okay. Let's just pause there for a moment because there's a concept here might be unknown to some of you, the concept of tzimsum. Does anybody know about this idea? Yeah? So this is a key concept of Lurianic Kabbalah, dating particularly from the 16th century mystic Isaac Luria, although it's hinted at in earlier texts. The Lurianic concept goes as follows. Before creation, God was all in all. There was only God. And the fullness and intensity of God's being wouldn't allow any other lesser being to actually exist. The analogy that is always used is if you try to light a candle in the middle of the sun, the candle simply won't exist. It will be completely overwhelmed by the vastly greater heat and light of the sun, yeah? So, you know, if, if the world, as it were, tried to come into existence with the fullness of God being there, it, it simply couldn't exist. It would be overwhelmed, eliminated, swallowed up instantly within God's being, even if God tried to create it. Very strange idea, but there we are. So as the very, very first act leading towards creation, it wasn't an act of making something, of a positive act. It was actually a negative act of withdrawing, of God making room within God for anything else to exist. Now, the Kabbalists, of course, always emphasize endlessly that you mustn't imagine this as a physical process. God doesn't, it doesn't exist in space. So we're not, so God doesn't have physical dimensions. So we're not talking about an actual physical withdrawal here. And ultimately, it's impossible even for our minds to imagine what this really is. But we can only use our crude human images and concepts to express something that is beyond us. But anyway, to go back to that. So God had to actually make an emptiness within Himself, or that God's self, in order to allow for that which is not completely God to even exist, to survive at all. So imagine it as God, as it were, withdrawing. Kabbalists use quite geometrical language, having warned that you mustn't understand it this way, but then they do. Yes, a, a God, as it were, withdrawing and creating a sphere of emptiness within the infinity that is God, the endlessness, the einsof, as the Kabbalists call it, the endless. Yeah? And creating a sphere of emptiness or relative emptiness. Later Jewish mystical theology debates how empty was this emptiness really? Hasidic theology basically says it wasn't really empty at all. It only seemed to be. Anyway, won't go into that right now. But, and, and then God projects into this emptiness a very tiny restricted laser-like ray of divine light, divine being, in order to stimulate the unfolding of, of everything that is. And this happens in all kinds of very complex stages that the Kabbalists talk about in huge detail. We don't need to worry about that just now. But what he's pointing to here is this concept that the very first step towards anything being or happening is for God to withdraw and make room for it. So it's a, it's a really interesting concept. I don't know if anything quite like it exists in any other mystical system, although there may be similar, similar things, but, but nothing quite as graphic, as it were, as the idea of tzimsum. So tzimsum is a, is a hugely paradoxical idea. Tzimsum means, literally means contraction or shrinking, but here it means a withdrawal. Or as the Hasidium understood, a concealment. A concealment of God's light. So it's a paradoxical idea because it's an act of grace because without it, we couldn't possibly exist. So for us, for anything else to exist, God graciously withdraws and makes room, as it were. So it's an act of grace. But at the same time, it means that, at least relatively speaking, God isn't there, God is absent. And, and that's the origin of all of the problems in the world that, that, you know, that God isn't there. Or isn't seen to be there, or is concealed, yeah? So, so this is a deeply paradoxical idea. The act of grace of making room also means the act of being absent, being in exile, allowing evil to happen.
And there isn't anything that fills the absence?
There's lots that fills the absence, yes.
How long, this also, it links in with the Olympian's hymn?
Hmm, Knossos, yes. Absolutely, yes, yes.
There's a huge amount of that sort of thought in Paul's writing there.
Thank you so much. I'd forgotten momentarily, I'd forgotten that. And that is, that is indeed probably the closest similar concept. Although the Knossos idea is related particularly to the, to Jesus and to the incarnation and so forth. But yes, very similar paradoxical idea. God makes Himself absent, withdraws, empties out in order to perform sort of a gracious act of redemption.
I was thinking also, you know, quantum mechanics and astrophysics is giving us, sorry, my food's gone. Giving us terminology.
Thank you. I was just thinking that quantum mechanics and astrophysics is giving us some language that makes, quantum mechanics doesn't fully make sense to any of us, I guess, and even physicists. But nevertheless, it's a little bit like that. I love that concept also.
Yes.
But it also really makes me think of quantum mechanics.
Absolutely.
And the, you know, the paradox of quantum mechanics and astrophysics.
Yeah.
It's just giving us, it seems to me, some language that is just touching the surface. We're not anywhere near there.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Yeah, we could go on and on perhaps about that. I love the, there are many aspects of quantum mechanics that, that seem to link to religious and to mystical concepts. And of course, ultimately, the idea that when you penetrate to the deepest levels of physical existence, there is actually nothing there. It is actually I in this nothing. And, and all of the something is built up of, of bits of nothingness. It's quite extraordinary, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Thank you. The sort of energy that you can't ever pin down or identify, yeah? Right, let's, let's press on. And for everything, I think, is the next, yes? That's one way to do it. Yeah, so we're in that paragraph about, six lines down. "All things were preceded by the absence", yes?
And for everything preceded by an absence, it is impossible to subsist other than by the will of the name, blessed be he, who himself subsists forever, who is before everything, who is eternal, without a past or future gap. As to the creatures, they were in his will. They come from the fact that he wanted them to be. Without his will, they are nothing and have no existence, as they had known before, before he came to will them to be. And his will regarding the creatures is the enjoyment he awaits from them when they attach themselves to their root through their desire. And it is through this that they subsist before they attach themselves to him, while he is eternal and subsisting. Thus, it is still necessary that the creatures fulfill his will, that they do what he wants of them in such a way that his will is realized. And that the creature might be, for the creatures have no existence except by the subsistence of his will in them. But what that will, but what that will wants, will wants, which is that the creatures attach themselves to their root, is impossible. For through creation itself, the creatures are at a distance from their root, as was mentioned above. They have distanced themselves because that is the constituted bodily state of men. Because of this, men have detached themselves from the root, that is, the spiritual state of the unity of the one. This occurred after the creation, willed by the name, blessed be he, so that they might subsist. But they could not respond to that will because of their distancing from him. That is why he illumined their being in the world with a clarity that comes from what he is in himself, blessed be he, through an emanation that is a weak intensity. Then men are filled with a desire and a will that are directed to him. This is like a small child who acts according to his age and forgets his father. But afterwards, when he sees his father, because of the great desire he has to be with his father, he rejects everything and attaches himself to him. He runs to him because he is a part of the parts of his father. Thus, it is, so to speak, with the name, blessed be he. He projects the splendor of his magnificence upon the creatures. Then their faces are turned towards him in a great desire, and that is his will, that is what he hopes from them. That is the cause of their subsistence for two reasons, as was mentioned above. This is the reality of the Sabbath, which is restitution to the root. The root sheds light on the branches, and the branches desire it. They find their delight in it and they long for it. That is union, adut, with the name, blessed be he.
Thank you. Well read, because it's a very odd passage. The last word there in Hebrew is achdut, from echad. Echad is one, so achdut. So the H is sometimes a ach. He actually, in the next paragraph, Pierre talks about the style of that passage. So I won't comment on that because he's, he's actually going to explain it. But what you can see is that the passage proceeds through a kind of chain of paradoxes. That in order for anything to exist, God has to withdraw. But nothing could exist if God... But nothing could exist if God didn't then project some divine being in there to make anything exist. The beings that then come to exist have an essentially divine nature and want to and ought to return, be united with the Source, with that divinity. But because God has had to project that light into the void, as it were, away from himself, in order for it to even exist, it becomes, it gets a sense of being separated from God. Separated, because that's inevitable, because they couldn't exist otherwise. That separation means it's hard to return. So although all of that happens by God's will, and God wants that return, that union between him, and, sorry to use the masculine, and, 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 and the creature, what happens by God's will is, as it were, frustrated by God's own will. So it's a kind of dilemma, kind of existential dilemma, that God creates for God's self, yeah, and for us. And so what's the solution to that dilemma? How can we overcome that inevitable separation that allows us to exist at all and find that essential union that is, is God's will and is our deepest inner will as well, because we come from that divine light? What's, what's the solution? So Shabbat is the solution, that's what he's arguing. This long passage, yeah.
Isn't it also the freedom? Is this where the freedom of the person comes into tune?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
God allows that because he wants us to be free to say yes or no and to cooperate with?
Yes, that's true, absolutely. And that's, that's right, and the freedom is, is an inevitable result in a way of, of that separation that has to happen. If we're, if we're just all sort of part of God, then there's no freedom. We can only be free if we're separated beings, and we're free because we're separated beings. But just as it was God's free will, and the Kabbalists emphasize this, God's free will to create, to bring about this other being, is also God's will that we would ultimately come back to him. Why? It doesn't really explain here, God's why in all of this. One can speculate, you know, that somehow the existence of this other being, which will ultimately be reunited with God's being freely, as you say, is in some paradoxical way an augmentation of God's own being. Even though God is perfect and self-substant and all in all, somehow God wants more. And how does God get more? It's by creating these beings with a will of their own, with an existence of their own, but ultimately to be part of God's being. Does that make sense? Yeah?
So by observing the restrictions of the, by observing the restrictions of the Sabbath, are we reflecting the sinum of God?
That's an interesting question. That's very interesting, I don't know, I'll have to think about that. That's a really interesting idea. Instinctively, it doesn't feel quite right to me, because although from our perspective, certainly the Sabbath restrictions are very, very restrictive, so much so most Jews ignore most of them. From a, from an orthodox spiritual traditional perspective, they're not really spoken of as restrictions in that sense. They don't have any negative connotation. But even so, there might be something in what you say. There's shamor vezachor, there's the idea that, shall I comment on that now?
Yeah.
Okay, well, yes, I mean, I think, thinking about the interpretation of the Ten Commandments, the Fourth Commandment in Jewish numbering, which is the Sabbath. And it has two different forms, as you know. In Exodus, it says, remember the Sabbath day to keep it holy. And in Deuteronomy, chapter five, it says, shamor, guard the Sabbath day to keep it holy. And the traditional interpretation of that is zachor, remember, means all the positive things you do to set the Sabbath apart by making kiddush, by saying prayers and rituals to sanctify the Sabbath and set it apart. And the shamor, the Deuteronomy version, is the negative side, is all the things you mustn't do to guard the holiness and specialness of the Sabbath. So in a sense, you could say that, although I can't honestly say that I remember seeing this, but it sounds perfectly right though, that in Kabbalistic terms, the zachor is chesed, is the, is the reaching out, is the, is the sort of loving and giving and aspect of God's being, which is a big theme in Kabbalah, and the shamor is the restrictive aspect of God's being. Yeah, the aspect of judgment and of strength which holds back. So yes, and shamor vezachor, of course, are united. They're said as one, that really came in one word, which, only for human purposes, they have to be separated into two separate words, two separate versions. So you've got, so shamor would correspond to gurah, to God's judgment and strength, which is ultimately derived from the absence aspect of timsum. So that's, so there is something in that. Yes, thank you, I like that idea. Sorry if you got lost just then, my thought patterns. If you want to ask about it, you can.
Okay, and here more, I think, even explanation about zachor and shamor, it's always useful to go wider. I have a question, you said about that Shabbat is a way of, toward unity with God. So my question would be, is it something progressive? By keeping every Shabbat, I am progressing toward unity? Or it is only one moment in the week that I can experience this unity? So is there kind of progress, or it is just this one day I have able to experience Messianic times and see unity with God?
What a lovely question. Yeah, thank you. I think instinctively, again, I think your second option is the one that is more prominent, is the way that most people would see it. That Shabbat, any and every Shabbat gives you that opportunity and, as it were, reflects in itself that unity. It's almost, I mean, okay, we're not obviously saying that every Jew, even the very orthodox Jews who keep all the Shabbat laws very faithfully, you know, experience a uniomystica every week. That is not the case, I can assure you, okay? And you're going to spend Shabbat in some kind of divine ecstasy, no, that doesn't happen. It's, it's, I think the best comparison, and a very useful one, is a kind of sacramental idea. That is, what's the Latin ex opera? Thank you, yes. So this is a sacramental thing that happens on Shabbat. Whether or not we experience it as a huge divine illumination, it happens, it's there, that is what it is. It's like, you know, a Catholic might, might take Holy Communion and, you know, not necessarily feel a deep sense of spiritual transformation and become one with Christ, but sacramentally, that is what is spiritually happening. So I compare it to that, I think, that that's, that sacramental analogy. It's not a language that Judaism uses, but I find it very useful to thinking about how traditional Judaism sees the commandments. But is there a progressive aspect of it? No, not really. I've never really seen anything, I don't think, that suggests that this sort of builds up from week to week and has some, towards some goal. The only thing I can think of that even hints at such an idea, but not, I don't think it really does, is a Taboedic saying of some rabbi, I can't remember which one, that only if all Israel keep two successive Sabbaths completely properly, then the Messiah will come. Which I think even, even in those devout days, it was very unlikely to happen. And that sounds so easy, let's just keep two Sabbaths, but yeah. For everyone to keep two Sabbaths properly is a sort of next to, next to impossible ideal. But it might, you could read it if you like, if you're Pierre maybe, as you implied it, yes. One Sabbath, two Sabbaths, and then, then we get the ultimate Sabbath kind of thing. I'm not sure that's what it really means though. Can you think of any?
I was thinking about this.
You are, okay, good, yeah.
I was also thinking like timsum and creation and the declaration, how it goes together toward the Messianic times. Does it or doesn't? No, are we always in the decreation state in the timsum or not? And yeah, I suppose if there's a progressive aspect for how to arrive, like I know other ways to arrive to Messianic times, what we have to do. But in discussing Sabbath, how this also enters the Messianic times?
Right, okay, so there's another aspect there, which is maybe relevant, but only if we're speaking very much from a Kabbalistic, Hasidic perspective. So it's not something that is normative mainstream Judaism. But then these texts that he's dealing with aren't really. And that would be the idea of tikun, of mending, of repair, which for the Kabbalists means that every spiritual act you undertake, so every act of prayer or performance of a commandment, especially if it's done with the correct mystical intention, actually brings about a real, a real tikun, a real repair in, in the divine, as it were. So it helps to restore the wholeness of the divine. And when all the tikun has been done, then God will be restored, as it were, and the whole world will be restored and perfected and returned to its source in a sense. So in that way, yes, Kabbalah provides a kind of progressive Messianism in your terms, that everything you do can contribute to that. For classical Kabbalah, it's pretty much only, you know, performing specially religious acts with mystical intentions that really achieves the tikun. One of the achievements of Hasidism, in a way, was to tell everybody, even ordinary people who can't deal with these Kabbalistic ideas, that everything you do in the world, if you do it for God's sake with a good intention, it is a bit of tikun, yeah? So every time you eat, every time you speak to someone, every time you read a book, every time you do a bit of work, everything you do can contribute to that tikun. The Hasid, Hasidim took the Kabbalistic image of the, the sparks of the divine that are in exile in the material world. And everything you do with the material world releases one of those sparks of the divine to return or to be united with its source. And then when all the sparks have been liberated and restored, redemption comes. So in that sense, yes, every, every Shabbat you keep, I suppose, does progressively contribute to that. But not just Shabbat, it applies to everything. Maybe Shabbat in a particularly powerful way, because Shabbat is so important, so it's deeply symbolic. Yeah, so thank you for that. We're expanding our, our views as we, as we study, that's lovely. Okay, let's, how are we doing? It's 12 o'clock now, are we carrying on till, what, 12:30?
Till 12:30.
Till 12:30, yes. Okay, which might get us to the end of the chapter. Okay, all right, okay, who's, who's next to read this message?
This message expressed in the form of a spiral with repetitions that bring about an advance towards a conclusion is typical of the Hasidic master's style. Its heaviness, its imperfection in a Hebrew that reflects the original Yiddish makes an explanation difficult and useless. It develops a length of the sheep?
It's at length, the best, best is the balsheb of this.
Oh, yes, the best elliptic teaching that we heard in the preceding text. It continues this, this teaching and ends in union with the Name. A union that is very much that suggested by the last prayer of Shabbat.
Yeah, no, let's just pause there, just briefly. I love the way that he, that he says, this is, this is, this is a difficult text in its form, it's repetitious. It seems to be going round and round in circles, this image of the spiral is beautiful. And he also mentions that this was probably originally a discourse given in Yiddish and then written down in Hebrew. So it reflects the kind of, the repetitiveness of spoken language in a way. It's beautiful. And that, that reminds me as well that, that one of the things that Pierre reflects on a lot is not just the content or substance of the Jewish texts, but their form as well. He has a lot to say earlier on, I think it's earlier on, about the hariza form, the way in which rabbinic sayings in the Midrash are like pearls strung on a string, one after the other. And he makes much of that in a way that I'm not really familiar with from other texts. So he's, he's a very perceptive reader of Jewish texts, yeah, okay. Who's next? Paul, do you have to carry on?
Rabbi Michalun dares to say that the Sabbath as lived and practiced by Israel leads to Israel's union with God. Such an affirmation is one of the exceptions that confirms the rule, according to which the masters, according to which the masters consider detachment,
Attachment, attachment, yes.
Sorry. That accord to God, to be more communion with God than union, achdut.
Okay, I need to put something in here. Yeah, I see in my original copy, I think I might have talked about this last time, I put a big star in there. So, yeah. This, this reflects a big debate in modern, the modern study of Kabbalah, of Jewish mysticism, and the question whether the concept of uniomystica, of being truly joined to God in a, in a union, is a Jewish idea at all or not. And the most, the great pioneering scholar, the most famous 20th century scholar of Jewish mysticism, Gertrude Scholom, who's mentioned in the footnote, took the view very, very emphatically that unlike Christian and Muslim mysticism, which speak of union with God, Jewish mysticism doesn't. He wanted to differentiate Jewish mysticism and say that Jewish mysticism talks about devekut, which is attachment to God, but still attachment of two distinct beings, as it were, and never really talks about union with God. Now that was Scholom's view, and it remained for many people, including Pierre, a kind of defining view about Jewish mysticism. What Pierre doesn't seem to have been aware of is that in around the 1980s, yeah, I think it was in the 80s, a huge transformation in scholarship took place, mainly through the work of a great scholar called Moshe Idell, who, who produced a kind of revisionist view, revisionist academic view about many aspects of Jewish mysticism, and disputed Scholom's view that devekut doesn't mean union, and brought to bear many, many Kabbalistic and Hasidic texts, many of which were never printed in manuscript, that point to, that if properly understood, point to a concept of uniomystica closely comparable with that which you get in some of the Christian mystics and some of the Sufi Muslim mystics. That the human being can, as it were, completely lose their separate identity and merge with God. Usually only momentarily, of course, but that, that is part of Jewish thinking as well. So Pierre isn't quite aware of that for some reason, yeah, but he's aware of so much, but not of that. So Pierre isn't quite aware of that, for some reason, yeah, but he's aware of so much, but not of that. But I think he's unhappy with Gershom Sholom's view anyway, and perceives himself, what Moshe Idell argues academically, that there is a concept of union in some way with God. Okay.
The Sabbath prayer suggests that union is possible. This prayer, after teaching Creation in the evening and Revelation in the morning, proclaims redemption in the afternoon in the mincha liturgy. The central blessing in the mincha liturgy describes the ultimate reality to which Israel comes to this observance. In its beginning, the blessing offers a ternary formulation that is very suggestive for our study of unity trinity.
Yes, well, somebody carry on, yeah.
Central blessing of the Amida, community prayer on Shabbat afternoon.
Yeah, maybe I'll just clarify here that the Amida, many of you will know, is the central prayer of all the Jewish daily services, three times every day during the week, four on Shabbat. And in the weekdays, it consists of nineteen benedictions, nineteen paragraphs with the benediction formula, three which are called paragraphs of praise at the beginning, three which are called, slightly inaccurately, paragraphs of thanksgiving at the end. And in between, during the week, are thirteen petitions, thirteen blessings of petition, asking God for various things that we collectively ask for. So three, the beginning, three at the end, and thirteen in the middle. On the Sabbath, the structure changes, and we don't do any petitions. You don't bother God with your requests or what you lack on Shabbat. Yeah, so you have the same three blessings at the beginning, the same three blessings at the end, the praise and thanksgiving, but just one blessing in the middle, one single blessing, quite lengthy one, with different parts to it. And it's that central blessing for the three Shabbat services, there are actually four Shabbat services, but one of them is to do with the restoration of sacrifices. He doesn't deal with that one so much. But the three of the evening, morning, and afternoon services, is that middle blessing, which is the only bit that varies in its text each time, almost. And so it's the evening bit, which is prefaced, that blessing in the evening, which speaks about you ordained the santi, you established the Sabbath as the goal of the work of Creation. So it talks about Creation in the evening blessing. And then we recite the paragraph, the beginning of Genesis, chapter two, when all the work of heaven and earth was finished, yeah, then God hallowed the seventh day. In the morning service, it talks about Moses receiving the tablets of the law with the Sabbath at Mount Sinai. So it talks about Revelation, and then we say the shamaru, the paragraph from Exodus about Sabbath is a sign between me and you. So it's about revelation and the giving of the Torah. And now he's focusing on, and he's already talked about those, and now he's focusing on the afternoon blessing, which is quite beautiful and unique. And we'll see what it says now.
You are one, and your name is one. And who is like your people, amen, Israel? One people, goi, on the earth. You have given to your people the day of rest and of holiness, a jewel of greatness and a crown of salvation. Abraham jubilates, Isaac sings, Jacob and his sons rest in it, rest in it, in a rest of love and generosity, in a true and sincere rest, in a rest of peace and of well-being, of security and assurance, in a perfect rest such as you love. Your children understand and acknowledge that their rest comes from you, and by their rest they sanctify your name.
Okay, just pause there. So that is the unique bit of the blessing. That is, as it were, that's the kind of prologue, really, yeah, to the blessing. And that's the unique bit that varies, evening, morning, and afternoon. And this is the afternoon bit, which is going to argue points towards redemption. The next paragraph, which we'll read out, comes in all of them, in every Shabbat, Amida, the prayer of Shabbat, and is the essential blessing of sanctifying the Sabbath that replaces the thirteen petitions of the weekdays. So I just want to point that out. This bit isn't unique to the afternoon, but the bit we've just read is. So, having said that, Theresa, if you'd like to...
Our God and God of our fathers, receive our rest, sanctify us by your commandments, and let us participate in your Torah, satisfy us with your kindness, let us rejoice because of your help, and purify our heart so that we might serve you with sincerity. Give us an inheritance, Lord our God, in love and kindness, your holy Sabbath in which Israel rests, the sanctifier of your name. You are blessed, Lord, who sanctifies the Sabbath.
Thank you. Okay, let's carry straight on, unless there are questions to clarify in there about the language, because now we'll see what Pierre makes of this text.
The prayer uses scripture without quoting it, as we have already underlined, tradition confirms through this the message of scripture, Deuteronomy, Zechariah, and Samuel, which says that God is one, that God's name is one, and that Israel is one. Tradition puts the message of Zechariah, which in the original was in the future, in perfect tense, into the present. What was in the future and interpreted as such in the texts, we studied above in Sifre, Deuteronomy, and in the first central blessing, in the additional message of Rosh Hashemah, is put into the present by this prayer. For tradition wants to teach that with and in the Sabbath of every week, one lives and celebrates in anticipation the Sabbath rest of eternal life. This text brings to closure the first part of our study. Its ternary beginning lets us hear a resonance with the Trinity of Christian faith.
Thank you. Right, so it's awkward here because he's referring back to big discussions he's had earlier on. I'm going to summarize those as best I can for you right now, and just talk about what these texts are, the three verses that he refers to. So Deuteronomy 6:4, I don't, you probably all know what that text is. The shama, here O Israel, the Lord is our God, the Lord is one. So the Lord is our God, notice the "our", God, the Lord is one. That's the first text. The second, so that's the Atah Echad in the Sabbath prayer, further up the page. You are one. Now, the Zechariah text, very important verse in Jewish tradition, Zechariah 14:9. Does anybody know the verse offhand? Yes, yeah.
It's about end times.
That's right, that's right. So Zechariah is a Messianic prophecy about the time when, you know, water will flow from Jerusalem, and all the nations will come on pilgrimage to Jerusalem every year on the festival of Sukkot, Feast of Tabernacles. All the nations will come to Jerusalem. If they don't come, they won't get any rain, and the Egyptians won't get water from the Nile, and so forth. Okay, and the culmination of that passage is, "The Lord shall be king over all the earth; on that day, the Lord shall be one, and his name one", translating very literally there. Yeah, the Lord shall be one. So in the future, in the future, on that day, that future day, which is not yet, the Lord will be king over all the earth. Because the reality in ancient times, of course, was that only the Jews, Israelites, were worshiping one God, and everybody else were worshiping whatever they were worshiping. And the Messianic, I'm sorry, the prophetic vision here is that only in the Messianic future will God be acknowledged as king by everyone on earth, and the Lord will be one, in the sense, all will acknowledge God's oneness and call God by one name, yeah? So it's a great Messianic prophecy. So one of the main rabbinic explanations of this, or sort of commentaries on this, the one in Sifre Deuteronomy, which he refers to here as Text 5, says, what does it mean in the shama when it says, "Here O Israel, the Lord is our God, the Lord is one"? And it interprets this in the light of Zechariah. Here O Israel, now, for now, for this time, the Lord is only our God, because we're the only ones who are proclaiming this God. But in the time to come, the Lord will be one, as Zechariah says. So the shama is interpreted diachronically as reflecting two different time periods, the here and now, the unredeemed world, where only some people acknowledge the divine unity, and the Messianic future in which all will acknowledge the divine unity. Where we are in that process is another question. Anyway, so that's a very traditional rabbinic interpretation, and that's reflected also, as he says, in one of the main passages of the Rosh Hashemah, the New Year Liturgy, which is all about God as sovereign, and it's about God is not acknowledged everywhere as sovereign now, but will be in the fullness of redemption. Okay, so there, he's pointing to that idea, that this is not yet achieved. God's name is not yet one. And yet, what he's saying here, every Shabbat afternoon, we say, "You are one, and your name is one". It's now, it has happened, this Messianic fulfillment is actually here, yeah? Realized eschatology. And so this is the power of the Shabbat, that it makes the Messianic time, the ultimate unity of God, present to us now. That's what he's arguing. And then the third bit is, "And who is like your people, Israel, one nation upon earth", which is a verse from 2 Samuel. And that points to a third aspect of the unity. God is one, God is acknowledged as one, and that is bound up with the oneness of Israel, which he's going to talk about afterwards. So, how are we doing? We've got 10 minutes.
Margaret, is this a misprint, this word here? This text brings... This word, it's ternary beginning.
Oh, yes, ternary means three, has to do with three things. Ternary, I think it is a word, ternary, and it has something to do with tre, with three. Yeah. I don't, yes, I don't know the etymology of ternary, but it has to do with three, anyway. And so it's the three ones there, the three echads in the beginning of that blessing, to which he's going to attach huge meaning, yeah?
Can I ask for a comment? Well, is he pushing it a bit to say New Year's resonance of Trinity in this? Isn't that really a bit...
Well, that's a big question, Margaret, and it's a very legitimate one. But I think we need to read more to see what he wants to say before we critique it. And it is open to critique, and we can do that, yes. But I think we'll let that develop a bit after lunch, probably. Shall we try and read a bit more? We've just got those two pages left, they're a big two pages. So let's just read them and let them percolate, and then we'll come back to them if we need to after lunch. So unity, the Jewish Trinity. Brendan, would you like to read?
This resonance also comes, sorry, also comes out of what the great scholar Jacob Zalal Lauterbach wrote in his day on the Jewish Trinity, which will serve us as a conclusion to this first part. "We shall therefore consider primarily how the Pharisees understood the three central concepts of Judaism, God, Israel, and the Torah, which are fundamental doctrines in Judaism, or, as one might call them, the Jewish Trinity. For the understanding and interpretation of these three concepts decides the character of Judaism and determines all its aspects, its laws and rituals, its beliefs and practices. These three ideas are in Judaism intimately connected with one another, and in Jewish thought they are inseparable. To use the words of an older Jewish mystic, while these three are separate and distinct concepts, they are almost like one, in that they are bound together and cannot be separated from one another. In other words, these three ideas hang together and are inextricably interwoven."
Hmm, okay. Let's carry on, and we'll see where we go with this. So this phrase, the Jewish Trinity, has a basis. Pierre didn't invent it. He's quoting it from a very important scholar, whom I might say a bit more about later, not very much, Jacob Lauterbach, very eminent and hugely respected, modern Jewish scholar, yeah?
Lauterbach could have based his words on the text of the shama prayer that we have just looked at. For this text begins with a triad, the Holy One, blessed be he, God, the name, Israel, a triad that corresponds with the triad, God, Israel, the Torah, which Lauterbach calls the Jewish Trinity. In fact, we have two equivalent triads that are known and received by Israel, God, name, Israel, in the Shabbat prayer, God, Torah, Israel, in the Zohar and Hasidism of Lauterbach.
Yes, compared with Lauterbach, that's right. Good, thank you. Well, we'll just press on for now, we'll come back to this afterwards, go over it.
It really is necessary to speak of triads, triads made up of a dyad, God, name, God, Torah.
Yeah, let's just clarify that, Sister. So you're saying that within this triad, God, Torah, Israel, or God, name, Israel, there is first a fundamental dyad, in other words, a pair of things that belong together, yeah? So one of those, the one reflected in the mincha blessing, is God, name. You are one, your name is one. And obviously, God and God's name belong together. How could you separate God's name from God? Yeah, God's name is God, as it were, is expressed as God. Okay, so that's a fundamental dyad. The other one is God, Torah, and this is the form which we'll see more about later, which comes up especially in Kabbalistic and Hasidic literature, although it has much older roots, which we'll look at later. So what he's saying is, before you get to the third term, the Tersham quid, which is Israel, yeah? You have a fundamental dyad, which is expressed in different ways, God and God's name, or God and God's Torah, and what is God's Torah? God's word. So God and name, or God and word, and it'll explain all of this. But I just want to follow each. Sorry, what's that, Margaret?
You can see where he's going.
You can see where he's going, okay, good, yeah. Okay, so that's the dyad, and then to make a triad, whichever of these is added a third term. So please carry on, Sister. Would you carry on from a third term, Israel, yeah?
However, one cannot teach that Israel is one in the same way as are without God, God and the name, God and the Torah. Thus it is not permitted to speak of a perfectly unified triad as a Jewish Trinity should be, according to Lauterbach.
Okay, that's pretty obvious. You can say, well, of course, God and God's name are one. You could argue God and God's word are one. word are one, but say God and Israel are one in some metaphysical sense is straining theological propriety, to say the least. So there's a distinction there, is pointing out quite rightly. Okay, let's carry on. Who's next? Thank you.
Whatever the case may be, since the creation of the world, God, the Torah, Israel constitute a fundamental triad. Israel responsible for revelation, the beginning of the harvest, makes this triad known to the nations. God and the Torah are one single reality, and Israel is a witness to it.
Thank you.
At the end of this first part, it seems to me that it is useful to sum up the triads of Jewish trinities that we have already encountered. I shall arrange them with a look to the Christian triad or Trinity. I shall speak of this triad Trinity in the third part. In order to arrive there, I would invite the reader to first listen in the second part to the message of Israel's tradition on the numbers one, two, three, and on their place in the unity. The text in the second part will show up two dyads, God and God Shekinah, the divine presence in the world. The Shekinah and the Holy Spirit, as well as several triads that approach the Christian Trinity without them being the same. The work will end with the third part on the Christian formulation of the Trinity resonating with the message of Israel's tradition.
Thank you. Okay, so he's, he's, he's dancing a very delicate dance here about things being the same and things being different, and that is, as Margaret said, that's a question that we have to ponder with him, and, and, but we need to see where he goes with it before we can, you know, see whether we agree and how we feel about it. I, I'll give you a preview, I'm deeply sympathetic to the way he approaches things because it chimes for me with the way I've for a long time tried to approach things, and he offers many interesting insights. But whether that's something that other people can or would say or should say is an interesting question, and we'll, we'll deal with that later, and that's going to be part of what I hope to do this evening in the launch bit, is just look at this whole question of how religions relate to one another, but I won't give away too much now. Okay. Yeah, so let's just read this last bit and then stop. So the recapitulation of the triads.
The triads and Jewish trinities, God, name, Israel, God, Torah, Israel, God, Israel, land, camp, God, Shekinah, Israel, God, Shekinah, Holy Spirit.
Okay, I think the God Shekinah Israel should be a separate line, obviously, they wanted to get it into the bottom of this page, but it, it should be on a line of its own, yeah?
I have discussed these triads in the course of this chapter, the Christian triad or Trinity, the Father God, the Son incarnate Word, the Holy Spirit.
Lovely, thank you. Another interesting question for Christians might be quite apart from the way he reads a trinitarian aspect in Judaism, is whether he's an orthodox trinitarian from a Christian point of view, but that's, not, not for me to work out.
That's difficult to define anyway.
I know, I know, absolutely, absolutely. I will leave that there, and I hope, I hope that's brought out enough special themes for us to.